Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We are actively registering students still for the start of the school year. Our parent information center is abuzz. We are also working diligently to onboard new hires so that we are ready for the start of the school year. Today, we have a presentation from some students that participated in our summer enrichment program. We had a very successful summer. We had enrichment programs for grades K through 5, and then we had extensive credit recovery programs for grades 6 through 12. We also had creative choices that ran programming from the end of June through last Friday. So we have been very busy this summer, and so I am going to ask Renee Koskis to come up and introduce our second graders who are here to perform from the summer enrichment
Renee, sorry, we can't hear you. Would you mind turning on the microphone?
So the children worked really hard this summer to perform...
This microphone will get you to the outside world.
Okay. Come on over here, narrator.
Okay, so the children worked really, really hard this summer to perform different plays at the Summer Enrichment Academy, and one of the plays we did was called Town Mouse, Country Mouse. And it's a fable that tells the tale of two mice who learn there is no place like home. Students will be performing Acts 2 and 3, followed by a song that you will remember if you are over the age of 50. So the country mouse will be played by Scarlett Rosas Diaz. The town mouse will be portrayed by Leah Delaney.
Oh, a little bit more, so they can see. There you are.
Our narrators will be performed by Evan Eustace and Levi Murangi, and Justin Gilmore will
The next morning, the town mouse urges the country mouse to come to town.
You only live once, you might as well enjoy yourself.
At last, the country mouse agrees. The two mice set out for town. Their journey is peaceful until they reach the edge of town. The mice keep to the edge of the road, even so, a horse swerves into their path. No sooner than mice leap out of the way, but they must fling themselves again as the wagon's wheels rush past. The wheels barely miss them. The country mouse gasps for breath. The town mouse gives the country mouse a huge push. Another wagon rushes past. Muddy water from the road sprays the mice. The mice go a little farther when the town mouse grabs its cousin's arm. The country mouse doesn't dare take a breath. Suddenly, something huge crashes down besides the country mouse. There's another crash, and another! The town mouse doesn't answer. Instead, it looks around and cries out. The mice come back, come to a brick wall. They tiptoe along the wall as quiet as can be. The mice creep through the tunnels in the walls of the house. They pop out of a mouse hole in the dining room, hurry across the floor, and run up a table leg. There are bits of meat, gravy, and potatoes on the plate. The mice begin to eat as fast as they can. But then, the town mouse freezes in fear and looks at its cousin in alarm. Some huge dark head appears.
Look, I smell something.
I do think I smell meat.
I know, but I smell better because they smell...
The cat makes a graceful leap onto the table and lands almost silently. The pair of mice freeze in fear.
Well done, well done.
Which one's Katie?
What happened to the mice?
This is standoff. You'll have to come back for me tomorrow.
Oh, man.
I hope my mom never...
Nice job.
Your mom tried.
Yeah.
Goodbye, city life.
It's going well, and I just want to point out that our performers today were from our summer enrichment program, and this is some of the work that was done during the summer. We had students reading through Reader's Theater, so this was a way to build literacy skills throughout the summer.
Excellent.
Welcome aboard. Okay, welcome Stephanie Potito, is it? Potito, new Lemmonster Academy principal? Is she here? There you are.
I didn't know I had to come to the table.
Well, welcome.
Hi, this is...yeah. Hi, thank you.
You want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, sure. So my name's Stephanie Potito. I've been in Lemmonster for two and a half years now. I was prior to this, I was in the role as the digital learning administrator, so I get to do fun things with kids like virtual reality, robotics, laser engraving, 3D printing, and I get to work with our teachers on integrating technology. This summer, I've been training teachers on how to use like artificial intelligence, except student-facing artificial intelligence, so getting kids using AI. So then, when this role was posted and sort of presented, I thought it was kind of a good match for me because I have that digital learning experience, I've been a teacher prior, and I do think Lemmonster Academy does have a unique sort of perspective in that we really can provide individual pathways for students to achieve academic success. So I'm super excited to take on this role and get to keep my other role a little bit too, so I get to kind of do the two things that I love.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Got a nice new building?
Yes, yeah, it's beautiful.
How many students can you fit inside?
I don't know the capacity for students, but I know Lemmonster Academy can accept up to 100 students. But yeah, it's big, it's a big building, if you haven't seen it yet.
Nice.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Welcome.
Thanks.
Not welcome, but congratulations.
Yeah, there we are. All right, thank you. Thanks so much.
So just before you leave, so if there is a parent at home or maybe a student watching this, kind of explain, should they be, are they recruited from within the system if they're interested at all? Is that a pathway to get into the program? Can you kind of explain?
Yeah, sure.
Looking towards...
Yeah, so usually, we go through guidance counselors, so students would first reach out to their guidance counselor. We'll assume that they're enrolled at Lemmonster High School, and then guidance kind of reaches out, and we sort of meet with students individually and talk to them about what our alternative paths to education are and decide which one might be the best for them. So guidance is the first place to start, and we go from there.
And what if it's a student that school chose out or maybe homeschooled, and now they want to come back into the system?
Sure.
Start off in the parent.
Yeah, so if it's a situation like that, they can just get in contact with me, and I'll work with them and kind of see what's best for them, and reach out to their previous, you know, district that they school choice in or homeschool or whatever.
Did you have an open house planned? Now that you have a new building and all of that?
Yeah, we had an open house a couple of weeks ago, so I hosted one with John Van Selette of LCE, and we're going to do some more promotional things as we go along here. But yes, we did host that. We did get some people in, and we do have some more interest in Lemmonster Academy, so that was a nice thing at the open house.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll have to have a meeting.
So I did put a quick summer program update. As you can see, around 700 kids participated in the Title I K-5 Summer Enrichment Program, 6-12 enrichment programs in our high school and middle school credit recovery program, and our Creative Choices Extended Day Program. So a lot of our schools were bustling and hustling this summer. As you can see, K-5 is still concentrating on Reader's Theater and STEM activities to build their reading, writing, language, and listening skills so that we can make sure that they are progressing in those. In the enrichment academies in 6-12, we had students playing ukuleles, we had students writing their own music, and we had our STEMS with the drones flying around, so there was a lot of interactive things for kids and hands-on things for kids to be doing during the summer for our enrichment program. In our middle school and high school, I'm not going to read what Samantha Como has written, but we had a very successful credit recovery. It's been a while since we've had kids kind of back in action and making up those credits, but a lot of our credits were made up, and all our students in the Lemmonster Academy and in the other LCE program all made up their credits, so they're ready to move on to the next year. So it was quite a successful summer for Title I and enrichments and credit recovery. And Creative Choices, you know, I put a blurb in here, but Mindy and her team, they kick it out of the park every year. They have 140, 150 students. They do the best things. They travel all over. They go on the best field trips, and kids are always engaged and having fun. And I think parents, you know, there's always a waiting list for that program, so she did a nice job. That's our summer wrap-up, and as you can see, the kids enjoy our summer enrichment, and they loved to do that. I'm going to hand it over to Laura.
And in addition to all of that, we also ran our Special Education Extended School Year. So this was for students who have these services on their individualized education programs, so determined by their teams. Programming is individually based, so we ran early childhood at Lincoln at Sammaset with 72 students, which is around the same as we had last year. We had Francis Drake with our elementary programming at 189, slight increase there of 10 to 15, and then the high school hosted our middle school and high school programs, numbers around the same as last year as well. And you can see the litany of services that we provided to students, again, based on that individual need.
All right, nice. And that's what I said, is between the rec. department, school, Boys and Girls Club, the library, some of the city programs we had, there was a, we had to go over about 1,500 to 2,000 students that were interacting at some capacity, so that's, that's the best year we've ever had. And we keep trying new things, you never know.
Right, you never know what's coming up. Like, we didn't know about the ukuleles, but she had...
Ukuleles!
Yeah, she learned how to play the ukulele. We ordered each a little ukulele I was practicing in the room, and she had eight students...
Can you play for us?
I cannot play for you. I did not pass, I didn't go to lessons, so...but they had eight students, and they were a lot...I tried to get two of them to come and play for you guys, but they wouldn't do it yet. So hopefully, next year.
All right. Other questions at all?
And it may not be you two that can answer it, maybe Robin or Bill. So it looks like there were over 320 kids in Francis Drake over the summer. Are we giving that school enough rest time to get ready for fall, or do we need to look at planning again, redistributing for next summer?
So they, Bill and his team really worked hard. The first two weeks when kids got out, we had put extra staff up there to do, and then we put extra staff out there when the sped summer school left to do a re-clean and stuff. We always ask Andres around that. It's a hard, it's a hard sell, not to keep both programs there, because of course Creative Choices likes the pool. It's walking, it's less busing, and cost-effective for them, and it's really hard to move those sub-separates out of that building where those rooms are already built. And just because I've been doing this for many years, so I think that Bill and Butch support the custodians there and support whatever they need up there, and I know that they've been given a lot of extra help.
District Comprehensive Review Report, Lauren.
Someone was nice enough to give me a summer cold, and I'm doing my very best not to share my summer cold, so this is...
There's an old one.
They are not, you're right. Renee's just going to hand out or pass along copies of the slides, and Kyle does have the slides to present to the community.
And this is based on what we talked about last quarter?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's...
Same one?
I don't know.
No, I didn't put it in the packet.
Oh. So I think Chris must have made copies for me as well. Thank you, Chris. So they are the same, they're bigger. If you get them from Chris, I had...
Yes, I do like bigger.
So thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. Renee is going to take down any notes or questions that you may have. We have received hot off the press, the, this report from DESI and from the consultant that they used, AIR. It will be going public tomorrow. The Department of Ed allowed, gave us the opportunity to share it with our school committee before that, but the entire, the entire report will be going live tomorrow. It's approximately 45 pages worth of detailed information, and then three or four appendices, and we will provide you with the entire document. But tonight, before it did go out to the public on the DESI site, we wanted to make sure that you had what we would call an executive summary of this, and we will certainly be coming back to you with more detailed information as to how these recommendations will be included in our strategic planning and initiatives going forward. But to be honest with you, we've had it for a couple of weeks, and as the cabinet, we are still going through it with each department to make sure that we're going to make good use of this. So just as an overview, as the mayor had mentioned, we came to you last year to say that the state was coming in to do this comprehensive review and want to thank everyone that was involved with it. There were some members of the school committee that sat in on a focus group. There were also members of our overall community, students, and families, and union members, and teachers, and administrators. They came out to the district for four days. They met with, either virtually or in person, approximately 110 people from Lemmonster when they were crafting this. I will, I also have to give a great shout-out to all of our staff, the administration and teachers. They put together copious amounts of documents that went to these people ahead of time. They did a document review before they even came into the district, so there were great amounts of information. And our teachers and our administrators in the buildings show that they're really proud of what they're doing. They provided us with lots of great documentation to really show and to make a picture of what was going on in Lemmonster. So again, thank you to everybody who did that. They also came, came out and did 91 observations in classrooms, so they were in every single one of our buildings, and they went in and they used a rubric. I'm just going to say, they didn't give us the rubric ahead of time, which I don't think is educationally sound, but we have results from that as well. So that will be in the comprehensive report that you will take a look at, and we'll give you more details. Go on to the next slide for me, Kyle. The six standards that they look at, or that the DESI, Department of Education, talks about as effectiveness, had a variety of questions and documents that they asked us for, and then they gave us a breakdown for each one of them. So they're listed on that slide. We went through, and we culled out two or three of the successes or statements that were made in the document about things that Lemmonster does have in place and suggested area of growth that they made, that they did put out. There are more success areas and areas for growth, and again, as I said, you will have time to look at those, and we will talk about them in more detail if you have questions. So as far as leadership and governance, this is really about how the school committee works with the district and with the city. It's also about the district and school leadership. It's about improvement processes, and it's about budgeting. So three of the things that they mentioned as highlights were effective communication and collaboration with the school committee, the five-year strategic plan being interwoven among all of the improvement processes in the district, and then cohesion and synergy among and between the districts and the district and the schools themselves. So those were three highlights. One suggested area of growth, which is something we continually work on, is enhancing parental involvement in the school improvement planning. So we do know that every school has an improvement team, a school council, and that includes our parents. The suggested area there was to actually try to provide more opportunities for our parents to be involved in school improvement planning.
Laurie, it seemed like at the very beginning when we started that, it seemed like there was a whole lot of people involved, and there's a lot of excitement around it. We used to get a report every year, they would come and present the report, and then it seemed to, in terms of the school committee, we didn't really have much interaction with them later on in terms of, you know, the actual plan? So did it sort of teeter off?
No, to amass general law, every school is required to have a school improvement plan, and it needs to be updated every year. It's something that we consider a living document, and that is a vital component of the school council. So, but we will certainly make a note of that, Renee, if that's something...
At first, they used to come to us every year, not that, you know, or at least get a written copy of it somewhere online, but it just seemed like there was more involvement, more parental involvement, and that seemed to have, and it could have been COVID or whatever, it just started to drift off, and we saw less and heard less and less of that. Around budget time, usually around January, February, leading up to the budget, we would get a presentation from each of the schools on their school improvement plan, so...
And this is hard work, and it takes a lot of dedication and time and effort by the school and the parents and the community members that are involved with it. So I think it is an ongoing process to keep those councils active and engaged, but we will certainly, obviously, this is one thing we're going to be looking at.
So I guess my point was, not to, you know, broadside this whole presentation here, but when they say enhancing parental involvement, it sounds like they want us to kind of boost it. They want us to get it going again, and yeah, I mean, that's what enhancement means, but I mean, it sounds like they want us to beef it up.
I believe you're correct.
And that seemed like my observation, which was, it seemed to sort of teed it off.
Well, and I will say that one of the expectations from this review is for the state to shine a light on things that we may not have noticed, or things that we want to rise up again. So this may be one of the great things that, you've seen it, we now have heard from someone from the outside, and it's just an impetus to move forward with that.
Yeah, because I think for us, it's a valuable tool to know what their plan is, because as we build the budget, those are the things that, if we have an opportunity to fund, or if we have surplus at the end of the year, and we're putting a plan together to find, fund some of those summer projects, now we know exactly what those are, we just peel them right off of the improvement plans, right? So, okay, that's it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
The next area that they... The next area that they focused on was curriculum and instruction. Some highlights were rigorous process for curricular review and selection. I know that Renee has been bringing forward many different curriculum products over the last couple of years that have been implemented. They're all high quality. The engagement of teachers in the process to approve and then implement these curriculum materials was highlighted, as well as strong structures for collaboration and planning time. So the professional learning teams and the ability to use our professional time, the early release days and the professional days, so those were highlighted. One area that they're suggesting we continue to work on is structures to systemically incorporate culturally responsive teaching. So making sure that students see themselves in the curriculum materials and in the projects that they're doing. Assessment is another area that they talked about and some highlights that we do use multiple assessment tools. And you do get, get to hear about those very frequently when we come to, to you all with, for ELA and math especially, that the district does do a comprehensive data analysis, not just of assessment or achievement data, but also of data points like our demographics and our attendance, which was a focus for you all last year. So that was a highlight. And then the collaboration that's allowed in our planning between the gen ed, the special ed, and the L teachers was highlighted. Clearly, it takes everyone to, to raise up all of our children. An area of growth there was to promote consistent communication with families across all grade levels. So that's another area that we want to shine a light on.
Is that your recommendation?
It is.
Steve, some software or something so that these meetings are in other languages? Is there any movement on that?
Not sure.
Maybe we should just move to another platform. What's that, Teams or something? Because it's kind of the most basic thing is here we are having a school committee meetings and it's just in one language. We have probably twenty or thirty others. So I don't, it's, it's, we have more people participating in our school committee meetings than we've ever had. They might not be here, but they're engaged. So maybe we just look at, yeah, I use, we use Teams too and a couple of platforms.
I don't know if it's the premium.
No, a couple, you know, you got Zoom, you know, you got other things, but, but I don't know. I mean, I would think this is pretty basic stuff. Translation, really easy. But anyway, that might be an area of, that we can help with in terms of promotion of consistent communication.
Thank you. In the area of human resources and professional development, highlights that they rose up were formal and informal feedback to teaching staff. Also a well-defined mentorship program. So every one of our new teachers has a mentor that's assigned in a very structured program for their entire first year. Then it, some gradual release into their second year with us. And also partnerships to bolster administrative capacity. So we have been bringing in some consultants to work with our building level administrators. The suggested area of growth was in evaluations, including feedback on areas of improvement. So we are very good at providing feedback. We may be needing to provide a little more directed feedback in, for people who need some supports and growth. That was their recommendation. That was based on a review of a random sampling. They had access to all of our evaluations for the last year, which is over five hundred evaluations of the teaching staff. They did a random sampling of ten percent of those, reviewed them, and that was their finding.
Does that, does that mean that we give them feedback on where they can improve, but not how to improve it? Is that what you mean? Oh, we're just not.
I, I believe that.
We're not giving.
It's a little bit.
It's a little bit of both.
Okay.
I think it's a little bit of both.
That we may need to give more directed feedback on improvement and then following up on not just the feedback, but on ways for them to implement that or to find supports.
Thank you.
It never hurts to let people know where they're at, right? I mean, it says feedback on areas for improvement. And then let them know where they're at so they're not surprised later on, right? We can do that.
Question, 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 question that I, that I have, I brought a little.
Jerry, mic closer.
Yeah, it's on.
Pull it a little closer.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The question I had, well, the one further up one, but it'll hit partnerships to bolster administrative capacity. And you said something about consultants. And I wrote down, how many consultants are you talking about? That's because that's me, how many consultants? And I wrote down question mark, how much is this gonna cost? And who's paying for it?
You.
Bad question to ask, I know that.
No, it's a great question and I do have an answer, so.
I'm so afraid to ask these dirty questions.
No, no questions.
Because it starts a firestorm.
Let her answer, go ahead.
Yes. We currently have two major consultants that are working with our administrators and with our future leaders. We have Boston College Lynch Academy. And there are two people who are focused on working with us. They have been for the last couple of years and we're working on moving forward with another round with them. We have attuned educational partners and they specifically are working with us in ELA and mathematics along with the district systems of success and our new equity vision statement. So they worked with some of the members of the school committee on that. The, both of those efforts have been funded through a, a large foundation from the, it's called the Barr Foundation. We have not had to pay anything for this work. The Barr Foundation is a New England nonprofit that focuses on systemic improvement of school systems. They have found that Lemonster is, has been and will continue to be a great place for them to put their monies to see some progress. And we've been giving them data over the last couple of years and will continue to. And as I'd mentioned, they're moving forward with continuing the Lynch work and we have at least one more year with our attuned educational partners.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Now, can I ask another bad question?
Go ahead.
On the leadership and governance slide that you had.
Yes.
Where it's a five-year strategic plan, I wrote down in the question mark in arrows. The five-year strategic plan, is that just for the district? Or is it individually, individual, individual?
Schools.
Individual schools? And do you meld them together?
I'm not making any sense, am I?
No, certainly, yes, sir. And one of the, one of the highlights from this visit was the strategic plan and how it has moved actually up through to the school committee and then down through each of the school improvement plans tied to that district strategic plan. And even down to the teacher level where teachers, student, student learning goals and their own professional goals are tied to pieces of that strategic plan. So it has been a great umbrella. We have another year or so to be going with that and we're continuing to gather data. So it's, it's an umbrella for the entire district.
All right, my last question, then I'm gonna stop before I go any further. Which it suggests area of growth, enhancing parental involvement, school improvement planning. I wrote down question, question, and I wrote down, I underlined costs because unfortunately, is it labor intensive? Firstly. Secondly, when you're saying, to pick up on Dean's question, enhancing parental involvement, is that gonna cost, yes, it's gonna cost, because nothing is, nothing is done for nothing.
If I may.
Go ahead, start me when you want, I mean.
It's going to cost the investment of our parents and our community's time. That's a very valuable asset. And to the mayor's point, we're constantly turning over people because they have other commitments and it is. It's a lot of time and effort that we're asking of them and of the teachers and the community members that are part of it. So there's no monetary stipends for the work. But we do rely on the, the good nature and the, the people who find it's very important to move forward the education of our children.
But it sounds like they want us to engage more parents.
Yes.
So maybe it's the, you know, put up the posters on the side, everybody gets a dot, we go in, we make it at one and a half hour, two hour, invite people in, I don't know.
Yes.
Provide the pasta supper this evening night, get them in, do a quick presentation, let people go up and give their opinion as to what the needs are. And shrink it all down and we have a plan, right? I mean, that's, that's what they're looking for, for us to engage more people who are busy or ready or committed.
Yes.
So can we grab them for, you know, and promise them we'll have you out of here in an hour, an hour and a half, then we'll move this.
So are we looking for anecdotal, anecdotal information or muscular parental involvement?
What's, what's our school improvement plan?
Well, I'm just asking guys a.
I'm just saying, there's some people really good at this whole planning stuff where they're engaging everybody, everybody gets a say, we got little breakup groups, and then it's over. And then we've got a sample of everybody in the building, every parent, teacher, where it might be involved. I'm just saying, I can't.
We're lucky in Lemonster, I believe.
Yeah, it's just people busy, you know.
When we do outreach for surveys, we get tremendous responses. And when we did our focus groups before the strategic plan, we had people here on Thursday nights. We had people here on Saturday mornings. So I will say that when we, we do ask, they do come forward, so.
Can I, I think historically though, too, there's been some schools who do a better job of outreach even just to us. So maybe if we could really push for all of the schools to really be using the school calendar because I know that there are some schools that are met more than others. And sometimes it's because I know there's an event and many times it's because I don't even know something's going on.
Thank you for that.
So I think some schools, no, never mind, part of it's a parental thing, right? But also part of it is, as a committee, I think some schools do a better job of communicating with us about events that are going on within the schools. So if there's something. Right, and so that's a way for our community to, parents, whatever, to communicate with us as if we know we're at, if we're at the event. But many times there's some schools that I don't really know all the events that are happening. So I think consistently, all of the schools communicating.
I still like the old fashioned calendar that used to put out.
Yes.
I don't have to look for anything, it's there. It's, it was honestly, it was, it was primitive, but at the same time is effective.
I think Superintendent Desmond puts the electronic link on the message. So you just click on it.
That's even easier. But I think you're right, I think that's, that's a big point is, because any event that we've ever had, at least two or most, you're right. I mean, most of the time, I mean, I think at graduation, everybody was there. That's, that's a first. So if not all of us, at least several of the members go to these community events and that's a good chance for them to talk to us, right? Get some feedback as to what's happening in the schools and bring our attention to something that, you know, we might not know. So we can nudge, nudge. Okay, that's all good stuff, though, this is all good.
A couple of other, student supports. The highlights were our tiered system of support.
Yeah.
So that includes tiers one, two, and three. Having bilingual parent liaisons in every single one of our buildings was a highlight. The family information center was also brought up as a highlight. And strong community partnerships, which I will say also that the family information center does a nice job of really providing families, parents with information about community partners where they can get some other supports that may not just be educational for their students. A suggested area of growth, which is something that is gonna keep Renee and I employed, is formal structured tier-one academic supports, especially in the secondary schools.
Can you explain that? Are they just saying you need more people to help students that maybe aren't?
So tier-one is the delivery of instruction to every child.
Right.
And they, what they're saying there is that even at tier-one, there are some students who just need that little bit extra in the classroom with the structure, not being with additional teachers or additional supports outside of the classroom or different programs, but to be very specific about what some children need to be able to just stay in tier-one and be successful.
They get stuck somewhere, you want the resources to get them around that barrier.
Yes.
And get them back on track.
Yes, so having additional practice, additional materials. Maybe it would be a paraprofessional in the classroom who is in support of the students that we've recognized that needed, but not.
Tutors.
A tutor.
Title on tutors.
You're right, the title-one supports, but not significantly separate supports, but really good. And their focus really is on the high school level. So we have a great program of reteaching and enrich at the elementary. We have a, what we call WIN at the middle school, which is a block what I need now. And at the high school, we don't have as, as structured a, a system and we're really working to do that. Josh and the other principals have curriculum materials now that are in ELA, math, science, and social studies that provide the teachers with a wealth of materials. If the students don't get it the first time, there are other high-quality materials that they can use.
Do you differentiate, you know, where it says, we, we, where you talked about tiered system of support, do you differentiate between audio input versus visual? Because, you know, some people listen, work, listen, understand better.
There's lots of modalities, you're correct, Mr. Who. Lots of modalities for learning and.
And to piggyback on, to piggyback to Dean's question, these tiered system of support, are they in, are they in, anybody can jump in, let's start, are they in multiple languages? Can they be in multiple languages? Will they be in multiple languages?
That's a little bit more difficult question. In Massachusetts, we do try to deliver our instruction in English. We provide supports in the native language for the students to be successful interacting with English. And if they have, need additional supports, they have time. They have translators, they have time with specific EL instructors. But we, and we're, our primary goal is to get them to be successful in the use of English.
All right, thanks, I appreciate it. So, so I was surprised at the high school, but let's just take it for what it is at the high school. So what is the sort of mechanism, I mean, other than a report card or monitoring the system here, the students' achievements along the way? So in other words, a teacher notices that a student's stuck on some. And what's the current, like, extra help, tutor?
So part of the high-quality instructional materials that are provided are common assessments.
Right.
So if you're in an Algebra I class, you're all taking an assessment at the beginning of the year.
Right, and right along, yeah.
Then there's additional supports built into those curriculum materials, so additional practice. Or, and the teachers have them right at their fingertips, they don't have to go look for them, they don't have to create them and they can put them in place. And then we certainly still have the, what we remember as help nights. We have some supports that are called flex, and I'm getting a little out of my wheelhouse here, so maybe that's for later on. But that students, especially in ninth and tenth grade, who may be struggling, will have that as a, as a scheduled class. They're not students who might be identified as needing specialized services or L services. They just need a little more support, so that would be tier-one.
And that's what, so what they're saying is we need more resources.
More systemic resources.
No, systemic, yes.
So.
So technology?
We, we need to take what we're, we've got and make sure that the students who need it are getting it. So I think that's the system they want us to tighten up.
So the teacher identifies that the student is kind of falling behind or stuck, needs a little, and then they want to see the resources to get them.
Implemented. Implemented, to get them there.
Got you, all right. Does that mean people, or does that mean?
No.
Technology, does that mean extra help?
Well, luckily, it, it means a lot of different things. But I think the, the system means that we try something for Laureen Sepola. We try it for six weeks and someone's monitoring it. And if it doesn't work, then we go to something else. Maybe that's a technology piece or, but it's, it's gonna be a, a system we're putting in place to provide it, monitor for it, see if it's working, and then review that.
Right, because a, a piece of math software. Right, because a, a piece of math software, you're not getting to the next level unless you, and, and...
The class is still moving.
Exactly, but, but the, the algorithm is already knows that you're stuck, or the artificial intelligence knows you're stuck.
Where it teaches a kid a different way.
Right, so it's going to bring them a different way, is how it's set up.
Yeah.
But that might not be in English or something else, where, you know, where it applies as easy as math. So what they're saying is, they want a more formal, structured tier one. So you can get back to us on that, as to how we kind of respond, because that's, that's the, the whole essence of education.
It absolutely is.
Right, I mean, every one of us can sit here and say, we've been stuck somewhere, and I don't know that we're really successful getting sort of unstuck.
No.
I keep saying it, I must have been sick when they were doing the multiplications under twelves, because they only made it as far as like, 12 times eight or something, and then I must have been, the rest of the week, I still can't get it. The rest of them I got, huh?
You only got two or eight?
Twelve, twelve.
All times eight.
Twelve times eight. But I didn't get, but I didn't get the rest of the way. Everything else I got mastered, but somewhere along the line, I got stuck.
Next stop.
Anyway, that'd be good to see how...
For me.
It'd be good to see our response to something like this, because that's the whole point, right? If excelling is, is knowing that something happened, but we fixed it, and we put the right resources in place, right?
Well, and when you do get your hands on what we've been carrying around for a couple of weeks, you'll see, there's a lot of information, and it's valuable for us to really look at it closely. The last piece, financial and asset management, the things that they rose up as successes, a very detailed and narrative-rich budget documents that we have, the ability for the district to provide funds for student school supplies were noted a couple of times in the report, and the facilities updates, and some of the capital projects that have been allowed to take place between the, the school department and the city over the last few years were duly noted. One area that they're asking us to be a little bit more specific is the alignment of the budget to the strategic plan, so making sure that even though it is happening, that it's evident in the budget documents, how the strategic plan and the budget do a handshake.
So that's where I think if we got engaged and involved earlier in the budget process, by talking about the strategic plan, and then as we go over the budget with Melanie and the superintendent, we're making sure, our accountability part is to make sure that we're, we are aligned, right? That the budget, that those dollars are going towards the strategic plan, so we, and then we have to be there to assess that later on, to see how we did ourselves, did we, did we put, supposedly we put money in the right direction here in the strategic plan, how did we do, right? That's, so that probably is, going to have to start earlier. That, along with the school improvement plans, earlier the better, and then we phase our way into the process where, and then at the end, we should have a budget that aligns us with school improvement plan, with recommendations from the superintendent, and the strategic plan, right? Isn't our budget really a reflection of all of that, at the end of the day?
Moral document.
Right. So yeah, I agree with them, we could, we could do a better job.
The, right, the, the last piece, the 91 classrooms that they went into, they talked about areas including emotional support, classroom organization, instructional support, and student engagement at the upper grades. One highlight was that rules and guidelines for behavior are clear and consistently enforced across all of the grade spans.
Thank you, that was my outburst at the last meeting before you left here. You've got, right Superintendent?
And what did I?
You've got to communicate, and I wasn't even part of this.
Well, and I missed that, so, but...
So, Laurene, I'm sorry, can you just clarify, so the observation dimensions, this is the types of things they were looking at, or these are the, the...
So as far as emotional...
Positives, or both?
No, these are just the things they were looking at.
Okay.
That, we're going to need to provide you with that in a detailed piece, because it was K to three, no, K to four, I don't know.
K to three, yeah.
Early elementary, then elementary, then middle, and high school together. There were ratings on all four of these in each of those grade span categories, and then the ratings were middle, high, middle to high, it was just a lot. So these are just the areas, say, like emotional support is the functioning of the classroom, is what they're looking at, the relationships between students and students, students and teachers. The classroom organization is really the management, and the behavior, the time, the attention. Instructional supports are about the cognitive demand on students, like that word, that rigor, that we, we say a lot, but the cognitive demand. And then obviously, the student engagement is how much of those, the time that they're in there, are the students actively involved. So those were the four areas, but I, I have to say that all of the people that we invite into our schools from The Lynch, or from Attuned Educational Partners, or from these groups of people, we hear consistently that our students are in class, they're prepared to learn, they're ready to learn, and that there's not anything getting in the way of their education as far as behavior and rules. There may be a few hiccups here and there, but overall, we hear from people that come into the district what a pleasure it is, and how ready our students are to learn, so.
So could we just ask, or I ask, or whatever, on behalf of the committee, to just every, bi-monthly or every month, put something on the agenda, and even if it's a written update as to where we're at? A year goes by so fast, we get caught up in vacations, and then it's, you know, the budget, and then graduation, and then it's summer, but even if it's once a month, just put on the agenda, nobody even has to come unless they want to, just give us a one-page quick update on where do we stand with this, so it doesn't slip by us.
The question that I was wondering about, what's the suggested area of improvement, alignment with budget to the strategic plan?
Where are we talking about?
Huh?
On the financial?
Yeah, for asset management. One, did they give you a template to follow up on how to make, how to align the budget, the strategic plan? Two, did they say that if we don't follow this, that there's a punitive outcome?
So the answer to number one is no, they didn't give us a suggested template, and the answer to the second part is also no. These are not punitive, we don't need to write a response or a corrective action plan, they're just, they're providing us with this information to help us to improve our systems and the quality of education here.
So do our goals align, Superintendent and our goals, should be the strategic plan? And that should reflect the budget?
I think we should, we should tackle this one in subcommittee and try to kind of wrap our heads around it and pick some recommendations.
Two quick questions, so tomorrow, when this comes out, will we get an email of it? Because I think we'd all like to get it and not have to go digging through DUCY for it, so if we could get that, great.
Find stuff on DUCY.
Oh no, it's great. And then also, so I guess for rating purposes, do they kind of give us a grade, or a scale, or medium, high, high performing?
They did not. There isn't an overall grade, there's something by each of these categories, but it isn't a, there is on the classroom observations, so that is at grades K to two, high on this, medium on this, low on this. There are specific, from the, that specific pieces from that rubric, but not overall. This is considered something like an audit, so they do need to provide us with good things and with bad things. Anecdotally, I, I've been here a while, I, I feel very, very proud of the work that, that the Leominster teachers and administrators, and you all, and the community have done to provide this report. You'll read through this, and, and I think you'll feel the same way. We have work to do, but boy, everybody has done a great job.
So basically, consistent self-improvement, right? Can always do better, here are some areas that you could do better in, and that makes us better, right?
The positives they have are really good positives.
Yeah.
Throughout the whole, you know.
And I agree, I mean...
Did they differentiate between theoretical outcomes versus mus, theoretical anecdotes versus muscular anecdotes?
Once you read this, you'll see that they, within it, they will talk, they will have quotes of people that they talk to, they don't name them by person, they're anonymous, but they would say a district administrator or a high school teacher. So there will be quotes from the focus groups, or from the interviews, there will be data points that come from MCAS or our other pieces, and then there will be citations of the documents that we sent them, like the strategic plan, or other, other documents that we might have sent.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, took a while.
Good stuff. Move on to two E, which is school safety, we met, there's some members couldn't make it to the meeting. It's all right, no, yep, no, we're good, and, but we had a good meeting, members of the police department, and the superintendent, and Steve, I think, was there, so there were some people that couldn't make it, but we'll have another meeting. It's basically to kind of drill down on the quick link to how we conduct ourselves in the buildings when it comes to school safety, so that we could clearly and articulately, and have it so that everybody understands it, so that, and I keep saying, nobody's reading that, big binder of policies and procedures until something happens, but we have a responsibility to kind of give the quick draft of, you know, you're not going to assault anybody, that, you know, assault a teacher, teachers, just a quick version of it all, but make sure that anybody understands that, and we're...
Walk through the doors and ease the golden door.
It's it, that's it, you've got to have it, fries come with it, yep. So no, but we've got to, we've got to have it, and so that, nobody can say they didn't understand, that you can't do that. This is an institution of learning, right? Nothing in here talks about anything else, but student achievement and learning, and getting better at what we do. All right, now we'll move on to approval of the minutes, does anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
June 17th.
From June 17th.
Anybody have a chance to read them? A second by Ron, anybody have any questions, comments, errors, omissions? If not, all in favor signify unusual manner. We're going to move now on to policy subcommittees.
We have not met.
All right, so one of the things that we need to talk about is what we ended with is sort of the policy on the sort of extra, the, the sort of projects that the CTE does, so that we've got schools, city, nonprofits, and then, I guess, other.
I know.
Right, so I, I think...
That will be put on our agenda.
And then finance updates?
We have not met either.
No approval of the warrants? Melon, you didn't spend any money at all?
Oh, we do.
Okay, no, sure. We'll talk about that sometime.
No, but we do have to wrap up some business from last fiscal year, so we have the warrants to finish out our fiscal 24. Obviously, we've had Josh and Melissa have come in and already signed them, but we do have to approve them with the full committee.
Okay.
So we need a reading, and I know Greg missed it a lot, maybe go...
I'll do it.
Jump in, thank you.
Okay, warrant 48 totaling $3,2674.42. Warrant 49 totaling $255,745.81. Warrant 50 totaling $8,884,389.12. Warrant 51 totaling $963,115. Warrant 52 totaling $948,084.98. Warrant 53 totaling $5,4596,832.72. Warrant 54 totaling $421,039.28.
So you're grants and revolving now?
Yeah, so grants and revolving, warrant 48, $567,000.
Let's do these, let's do these first.
You want to vote on them?
Vote one at a time, sure.
So that's the recommendation, is there a second? A second, any questions or comments on 48 through 54? If not, all in favor, those opposed? Okay, now let's do grants and revolving.
Grants and revolving, warrant 48 totaling $567,748.14. Warrant 49 totaling $161,349.81. Warrant 50 totaling $640,256.92. Warrant 51 totaling $826,742.98. Warrant 52 totaling $678,842.31. Warrant 53, $218,823.89.
That's it.
All right, warrants 48 through 53, that's the recommendation, second, second by Melissa, all in favor, those opposed? Okay, thank you. Now Melanie, do we have to approve the 25 budget?
We do, we have to do an approval to be put into munis as, as it is, without any adjustments.
Okay.
So we can start off with the expense budget report, so you can see, there's been no changes, no adjustments, we're putting it in exactly as it was requested.
Okay.
So the total expenses was the $32,221,023, and on the second page, you've got your salaries, oh, it was in backwards, sorry. So you've got your salary total, which was $65,036,011, and that's how it would go into munis.
I make a motion to approve them as stated.
Second.
I still want to know where the extra pennies are in the end.
I know.
I don't know.
You told me to leave them out.
You've got them all the way down.
Yeah.
I don't know. Okay, so you heard the recommendations, a motion and a second? All in favor, those opposed? All right, anything else, Melanie?
I have one other vote, order of business, so as you know, each year, we have some invoices that will trickle from our previous year, that we would need to vote...
Prior year expenses?
Correct, that would need to vote to be paid out of our school choice, so I'm asking for up to $150,000, we may not need it, but the vote would be there for me to use it if necessary.
So these, you'd be using that account for prior year expenses?
Yeah, which we are allowed to do.
Legal and everything.
That's, is it money's already encumbered? Like, we must have an idea of bills that are out there. Yeah, we have a couple of bills that we are pending approval, that could be paid out of a grant, but we're just waiting on Desi to let us know, and if Desi says, you know, no, we're not going to approve it, then I'd like to be able to pay them out of school choice.
So you'll first try to get it from wherever?
Correct.
Other mechanisms and funds, and if not, then this is your fallback.
Exactly.
Okay, and then what's left just stays in that account?
It stays in the school choice account.
Okay, you heard the explanation, we need a vote? Somebody want to make a motion?
Can I make a motion if we...
I'll make a motion, approve it.
Motion to approve using those, that account for prior year 2024 expenses.
Correct.
School choice.
Out of school choice.
Out of school choice. Sorry, Ron's the second, John, and then Jennifer, whichever. Second was by Ron. All right, okay, all in favor, all right? Thank you.
For me.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, guys.
Vote on graduation date, we didn't even start the year.
I know.
I know.
Josh, what are you doing to us?
It goes by faster than you can believe.
I guess so.
So not to rush the year, but we are requesting a change of the graduation date, I think initially it put in, put down May, June 7th to May 30th, it would be May 31st, actually, Chris pointed that out to me. So the biology MCAS this year is set for June 4th and 5th during our traditional senior week, and to support the test, the MCAS test, a lot of key staff members who are essential to putting together graduation would be double booked, they'd have to be in two places at once. So for example, counselors typically put together all the awards and scholarships and the entire program for senior, senior night. They also secure the testing site, so that there aren't kids roaming in and out of the MCAS area and causing tests to be voided. The deans and assistant principals supervise the setup of the field and train the kids on how to march around the field, they're essential for monitoring students who are not taking the MCAS test. When all the teachers are proctoring the test, they do a lot of that supervision. Music teachers, class advisors, media teachers, they're all needed for both MCAS proctoring and the setup at the field. And then Dave Bayshon and Chris Kine are the MCAS coordinators for the school, so they're responsible for the custodianship of the MCAS materials. They also read names at graduation, and the place where they get those names right is by, is at graduation, that's when they write them down phonetically. And these all seem like really trivial things, but students only get one graduation, and their parents only get one time to watch their, their child cross the stage, and they really want that name said right, because there's no second chance. We only get one chance to present a student a scholarship or an award at senior night, and if a counselor misses it because they were trying to do that while they were supervising MCAS, there's no redo for that. So of the other schools in the midwatch league, 12 are holding graduation on... So of the other schools in the mid-watch league, 12 are holding graduation on that weekend that I'm requesting, May 29th to June 1st. There are five who are holding it the following weekend. One is trying really hard to move it for the same reasons, because it's the logistical concerns with MCAS. May 31st is, was still within the range permitted by Mass General Law to hold graduation. So we are asking to amend the school calendar to move graduation from June 7th, 2025 to May 31st, 2025.
So you're actually going to go backwards?
A week earlier, yep. The way it's set up right now, actually, the underclassmen will have their last day of classes the day before graduation. So there's only a couple of school days left after graduation, the way it's set up right now. And it's just kind of that first weekend in June is the, the 7th. And so that kind of pushed graduation a lot deeper into June than we normally go.
I would think that gives you more time to do all of this.
Well, it's just that there's too many things going on at once. Typically, senior week is one week and then the following week is when we have to roll out the bio MCAS. So it's really just spreading out to major events.
The second phase of this has nothing to do with the seniors. It's just those teachers and staff have moved to a different.
Right, right. I can't move MCAS, but.
At the 31st now allows them to concentrate on.
Right, they're not booked in two places at once. So, and I think, you know, in, in that sense, like I, I know, you know, I want it to be better for students. And I, I know I'm making life easier for teachers, but the result, I think, is that we get a better graduation for our seniors and hopefully a smoother MCAS for everybody else.
Obviously, we want it to be a great experience for all the kids in Leominster, it's just the priority. But generally, they've tried to coordinate with MoneyTech or Fitchburg so that we don't have multiple graduations going on at the same night. Do we know where Fitchburg, MoneyTech?
So Fitchburg right now is Friday night, the 6th. Their principal wants to move it to the Friday night prior to, so that'd be May 30th.
30th, okay.
I don't know about MoneyTech. They didn't respond when I had asked, so.
This is not Memorial Day weekend, though, is it?
It is.
No, this would be the week prior. Yeah, this, this would still be the weekend followed. So it would be kind of the same senior week that we normally have, where Monday is the holiday and then senior week goes over the rest of the week.
So instead of two weeks of we're doing this and this and this and that, they can focus on graduation.
And then once graduation's out of the way, then we focus on MCAS and then we get everybody out of here.
Makes sense to me.
I'm motion to approve.
Motion approved by Sal?
Just, no, no.
You gotta make a second and then discussion.
A second.
Then discussion. Second, then discussion.
Just make sure this is pushed out since it's a major change for families for scheduling.
Way ahead of it, so, you know, before open house, before I send out all my stuff to parents and families, we wanted to get it out.
If you're going to graduation early, you're not going to have any. You won't have any problem communicating that.
Well, you know, a lot of people do travel for it, including international travel. And so we want to make sure that they get those dates as soon as possible.
No religious events or anything going on that day?
None that I could see.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Those opposed? Okay.
All right, I appreciate you very much. May 31st, book it.
2025.
All right, thank you, Sal.
Thank you.
Okay, obsolete equipment. You have a list of obsolete equipment in here. Is anyone who might make a, a motion to declare this surplus?
Sure, I'll make a motion to declare all these surplus.
Is there a second? All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Any new or old business?
Yes, I have two things.
Yes.
One is I know for the, we got that email around the Habitat for Humanities building project that will be in Leominster. So we need.
Superintendent and I are going to speak with the Habitat for Humanity. Maybe we can work that out so that it ends up being a, a family farm Leominster that gets the, the house. And then I think we can get hopping. We're still, we were trying to get the community center ready to roll and get the foundation. It's probably not going to happen that quickly. So next week we can speak with them and then at our next meeting.
We just need to vote on, so I want to make sure that we have enough time to do so.
We can have a quick meeting during the week.
When you're talking about on 10 straight.
Yeah. And the only issue is everybody's supportive of Habitat Humanity. Everybody is. It's a great program. Their offices are here, everything. It's just.
Yeah, we wanted, the building project was supposed to be at Leominster.
Right. And the family that got it this year, believe me, you could not have found a better family. It's just the families that were from Leominster put their name in and during the lottery, I'm picking out the, you know, the name. And I wasn't, I just guess I wasn't up to speed on it. They have a region and that's where they fundraise and that's where they get their help. Well, they picked a family from out of town and nobody muted the, you know. So I could just tell you, people were really upset. And that's like a one in a lifetime thing. So all in all, it was a beautiful job done by CTEI and everyone. And it's a great organization and we want to certainly be part of it. But we'll just see if we can't get it so that it's.
Yeah, for the Leominster family.
So what I might do is we can chat early next week with them. And if they're okay with it, then maybe we just call a quick meeting at like 6:00. We come in, we meet, and then they can get going. You know, try to get in, students are going to try to get in. Last year it didn't start until January, February. This would allow them maybe to get in, button it up, at least get inside for the winter, if they can get the foundation in and everything. And the lot is owned by the housing authority, so, you know, the cost, we don't have to worry about that. So that's a quick title search, get the foundation, you know, get a surveyor in, get the foundation in, students can get started. But it's a great program and it's just really hard to tell people who put in for it, who this might be their only chance ever. Get a house, that our taxpayers' dollars are going towards building a house.
For somebody else.
For somebody else.
No, I get it. I just want to make sure that.
And the second one?
We're apprised. So the second one has to do with the stipend that the school committee has requested to be increased. There was some confusion. A few of us attended.
I don't understand what the confusion is.
Melissa and myself, the city council meeting. And I think they, for whatever reason, they construed that the superintendent was requesting it, which was not the case at all. It was a request by the school committee. So I, we do, we were told.
We took a vote.
Right, we did.
She was communicating that the school committee took a vote to get this on the agenda.
Right. And so we want to, you know, we were told that we need to resubmit it. And so we need to resubmit it with clear language that it is the school committee is requesting it, not anybody else.
Chris is the secretary for the school committee.
Right.
On behalf, I'm the secretary of the school committee, on behalf of the school committee that took a vote on this day.
And I said that in the last one, but I put it on letterhead.
I know.
Right.
And that's why they stayed, the vote was from Paul Apollo.
Right.
But it doesn't mean, it doesn't matter who submitted the petition. The petition was, was based, was done on us, right?
Right. But then the superintendent requested, the former superintendent gave, requested that it be withdrawn because she didn't want a perception that she was requesting a pay increase for her bosses, which I understand. But, so it needed to come across, their suggestion was that we all sign off on it and put it on our letterhead so that it's not coming across as the superintendent or her secretary.
You're submitting this based on, you're just communicating this, that's all. We already took a vote. That's the only thing that matters. You took a vote. That's all that matters. Who communicates it, doesn't matter. This is the body that took the, the vote. So let's get it down to the, one more time.
And so I guess my other thought was, would be suggesting a couple, or at least one change, to include language that says, you know, here and after, that the school committee would be getting an increase in their stipend equivalent to the increase for the city council going forward. So we don't have to keep bringing this back.
Just tied to the consumer price index.
You know, tied.
That's how my pay is established.
It'll be tied to the same standards and timeframe that the city council is getting paid or increases. So we can, you know, vote on that, but it's just that way we're not going back, you know, every 10 years.
So we would like to take a motion to modify our request, which states that after it takes effect, which would be after the next election, then.
Well, it shouldn't be.
Tied to the consumer price index.
Well, it shouldn't be tied to the, after the next election.
The raise will be.
Not, or the increase of our stipend, but they are after the raise.
They're after.
But not, not the increase of our stipend.
It would be thereafter.
For that. So. So, right. So then the other issue to really, for us to have a discussion about is we had requested $10,000, which is an increase of $8,000 from what we're currently getting. We have not had a raise in 10 years and prior to that, we had not gotten paid at all. And, you know, we're still below what the city council is getting. I know the city council felt that their job was more labor intensive than our job, which I'm not so sure I agree with that. But in any case, you know, several members of the city council felt that, yeah, we probably should get a raise, but maybe not that much. We did give them, or we did have information from MASC, you know, what surrounding towns and other communities similar to us were getting. And some are getting quite a bit more, some are not getting as much. Some communities are getting health insurance. That was not something that we were asking for. It is something that the city council does get. They think they get $12,500 in their stipend plus health insurance, which is an incredible. And a pension, which we don't get any of this. So I didn't know whether people wanted to stick with the $10,000 that we're, had requested or do we want to say something like, you know, we want to, you know, $6,000 to $10,000, you know, raise and leave it up to them to determine the amount.
Saying, look, this is the amount we're requesting.
They asked for that.
It's up to them.
Yeah, I mean, they, I mean, I don't know. So, you know, I just want to throw this out there.
The more we add, the more complicated it's going to get. I don't get anything from this, so everybody knows.
They also wanted to.
But I don't want to make it so complicated that it's not going to pass.
And they also wanted to make sure that Melanie felt that we could sustain that in our, you know, upcoming budget. And I believe it was, it was included or thought that we could sustain that if we were asking for $10,000.
Without knowing the amount, I haven't.
So 10, say if it was $10,000. 10 times eight would be $80,000.
I was in school for that session. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, two is already built in, right. Correct.
That was quick math. That was quick math.
Right. So that was their, also other, you know, thought is they wanted to make sure that you were aware of the, and felt that it was feasible in our budget. And again, it would be coming out of the school budget and not out of the city council budget or the.
So for this additional, you made the motion.
So did people want to change the financial structure or not? We, we all agreed on, I think.
It's $10,000. You already get two, so it'd be an increase of $8,000. And then, and then following that, year after, it would be tied to the consumer price index. Like, like I think theirs are in big mines. Mine is definitely tied to the consumer. If it's bad, you've got nothing.
I mean, and we've gone 10 years without anything, so I, I don't think anybody's worried about that. But it's just so we don't ever have to go through this again.
All right, is that, are we confusing you too much or you got it straight?
Unfortunately, Chris was called to go, which was unfortunate.
You went too.
They called her to go.
A big shot.
Banded her to be there.
No, I voted for them. And I said, I was just telling you that they voted on this.
You wrote it.
And Robin also attended as well.
Wow, you guys, this is full court press down. Congressional hearings. All right, anything else on the new and old business? Yeah, all right.
I made a motion. Who's going to second?
Second by Sal, all in favor? Those opposed? Anything on the new and old business? Superintendent, we're ready to open? We're ready to roll? The lawns are mowed, the floors are waxed.
Just for planning for this year, we haven't had the boosters or anyone come down. And I think that's supposed to be done annually, so.
Fan boosters?
Any boosters. So if we could maybe try to plan that, so maybe we don't get all the boosters one night, but kind of filter it through the year, that would be.
And there was many meetings about combining all the boosters and that really did not get off the floor, so to speak.
I think having COVID hit.
Right, and then it just kind of petered out. But I know there, there was at one point, you know, a push. One, right.
I want to give a plug for the DPW, the wire inspector, Wendy, that all been working to get those lights installed at, at Doyle. They are, we do them ourselves. And we save a lot of money. I mean, we did Fonia and it came out beautifully.
Yeah, those are really nice.
You can run them from your phone, these new ones. This was obviously a bigger project, but they, they've been working every available moment to get them in. So we should be ready to go by football and soccer.
Yeah, it looks like the walk, the crosswalk was being done by Doyle too, which is a huge release that was.
To make it safe because we had the crosswalk. We have people want to go, but there's a curve there, but this should work its way out. And if we're not out to bid yet, we're just waiting for the final, final review from the school department on the fields. And then out to bid it goes, so finally.
Finally, that only took 20 years.
Well, guess what? Comes at a convenient time because it's going to be paid off. Seriously. And we're going to be able to put that towards the school. Oh, and the other thing is I think the school building project, we took a vote the other day to go, what is it? One?
N1.
N1, which is the new, which is the new building. So we had a bunch of options. It's a process. Whittle it down, looked at, you know, renovation, expansion. There were four different options. And this is the one now that will go to the School Building Assistance Program, SBA. And they have, there's a number of votes that have to happen and proposals that need to be shared. But we, they think that they'll agree to that. That's the one that's the most cost effective and it gives us a new school. New school will be built at the same time the existing school is in place, so a lot of logistics and same as we did here. And, you know, the company we got here did an awesome job keeping the building open. CTE built the, the little.
Freeway.
Freeway there.
So is it on a different, what, different, I was making?
Yeah, it's tight. It's really tight, but, but we think we can pull it off. That's it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
You're leaving? Motion, motion adjourn, all in favor? All right, the rest of you stay here.
Thank you.